So I'll call to order the monthly meeting of Charlottesville redevelopment and housing authority board of commissioners. It's a virtual board meeting, Monday, February 22 at 6:00 PM. And I need to read the code. This is Governor Northam's executive order number 53. That allows us to meet virtually during the COVID pandemic. Issued in an exec- Governor Northam issues an executive order EO 53 restricting public gathering of greater than 10 persons. Accordingly, code 2.2-3708.283 permits public bodies to meet electronically to discuss business required or necessary to operation of the public body in discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities in times of emergency and to address COVID-19. Therefore, this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia law because COVID-19 pandemic makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a forum physically in a single location. Okay. Who would like to do the roll call of commissioners?
I'm gonna take, I'll take that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green? Commissioner Dr. Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Slaughter? Commissioner Goldblatt?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor Walker? Here, Rucker?
Here.
You can have a call.
Wonderful. And let's have a moment of silence before we begin. Okay, thank you. Let's see.
The lone four on the beach.
Well, we'll figure out. Okay. For general announcements, since I'm looking at Ms. Johnson on this back on the screen, which is awesome. I wanted to share with everyone that might not have seen the news that Joy Johnson won a major, as they call it, a major award from the National Low Income Housing Coalition. And you'll have to tell me if I'm saying is it Dole Beer or Dole Bear Lifetime Service Award?
Question, question Dole Bear.
Dole Bear.
Yeah.
So this is an amazing national award and we'll have to send, I think it's on the CRHA Facebook page, but the link has been going around, so we'll make sure to share that. But it's amazing and it's also nice after Ms. Joy's been out for a few weeks. So it's great to welcome you back with that exciting news.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so if folks don't know who Cushion is, they should look her up. But she is, she was a Quaker. She is not living now. She was a Quaker. But she did a lot walking on the hill and talking to senators and implementing affordable housing policies and negotiating and all. But the one amazing thing that people don't seem to get, but she did get it, was that she really and truly advocate for, one, her board members who don't understand, and two, the residents, because the residents really is at a disadvantage. However, she was instrumental in the housing trust fund that the coalition now have. That's one of the reasons why we have that, and I think we have benefited from it. I think, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, because I think that trust fund took her down to the state. But anyway, if I was gonna get any award, any award, I've already gotten the Dr. King Award. But if I was gonna get any additional award, it will be that one, because she was very grounded and I really understood what grounded meant and still mean. And I hope I'm, I hope I'm living up to, you know, her namesake. So Charlottesville couldn't even give me an award that mean anything. But just saying, I'm throwing my shade. Not at you, Nakia. Not at you, baby. But anyway. And I just want to say one thing, too. This award, I'm accepting this award, but I didn't do all that work. Other residents did, you know. Other board members did. Residents across the nation did, you know, the Bertha Gilkey, the Martha Johnsons, you know, the pioneer of public housing. It's, it's, you know, the JR Flemmons, you know, and I could go on and on. DeeDee Gilmore, Shamor Cooper, all of those folks. Everybody in FAR. That award is for everybody. It's not just for me. So I, I, I just want to be able to say that Holly Edwards, Dave Norris, all of the folks, you know, who I dragged to those conferences so that they could see a different glimpse of what I, see the glimpse of what I was seeing about how we could actually make affordable housing happen. And so the work that FAR and myself has done, and to see those 63 units getting ready to go up, and to see Crescent Halls getting ready to rehab, and to see Patel Gilmore coming to the forefront of being an organizer, because I've been asking black men to step up for years. And to be able to see that, for me, you know, I am just very thankful.
Awesome. Thank you. And I don't, there's nothing else more exciting here. We'll talk about the groundbreaking later. In terms of announcements, we have a work. We have a work session coming up Thursday, the one that's been canceled twice because of icy roads. And then a regular meeting next March 22. The safety meetings continue every Tuesday. Next, it'll be March 2nd and then March 16th at 6 o'clock. And then we have, oh, a new redevelopment meeting time to try out and see who, you know, who can make this time, but it'll be every first Thursday at 5:00 PM. And lastly, resident service committee has been restarted, and that happens every second Tuesday of the month at 1:00 PM. And all of these have associated Zoom links that will be on our website. But I just wanted to announce the, there's many meetings happening all the time. So let's see, does anyone else have any announcements, general announcements or reminders before we go to public comment?
Just that the next safety committee meeting is going to be on March 2nd at 6:00 PM. There's been some talk about like potentially moving to a 4:00 PM time, if that would work better for people, but we can talk about that more at the actual, at the actual meeting.
Awesome, cool. Okay, it's time for public comments. And let's see.
Hi, Joe Rucker. This is Joe Rice, the Communications Office.
Hi.
Hello. And yeah, if any of our attendees would like to address the commission at this time, please click the raise hand icon. You'll be called upon in the order of hands raised. Once you have been activated, please unmute your mic and you'll have three minutes for comment. We have Brandon Collins. Brandon, you're on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Good evening, CRHA. This is Brandon Collins. I'm an organizer for FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. We are the federally recognized resident council and resident advisory board for public housing in Charlottesville. And we take that duty seriously and hope that you all do too, and for the most part, I think you do. But feel free to check out the regulations and see all the awesome rights that residents are granted under federal law. Not a whole lot to say. I do first want to do two sets of congratulations. One is for FAR's board chair, Joy Johnson, and the award she received. We're extremely happy about that and looking forward to the virtual ceremony in March for that. But also wanted to welcome FAR's brand new interns. So every year, FAR runs an internship program for low-income residents of public housing. They earn a stipend while they learn about civic engagement and participate in organizing and given FAR capacity to organize and do lots of awesome things. So our current new FAR interns are Alexis Cooper, Slethia Carr, Ashley Freeman, and Gwen Allen. And Gwen is a HCV recipient. So welcome to them, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from them as time goes on. I do also want to thank Mr. Gilmore for attending. I hope you all will engage with him as much as possible with, with the idea in mind that, you know, community-based solutions to violence intervention is really probably the most effective thing that can happen. You all have a safety action plan, which we fully support, and we, you know, appreciate you moving forward on that. But the bottom-up grassroots approach to dealing with violence in the community, it's really the only thing that can make a difference on a, on a major scale. So we hope that you will, rather than put restrictions on them or put demands on them or lots of requests on them, rather let them, you know, get the things they need from you in order to do the work that they're attempting to engage in. And welcome, Mr. Gilmore. Super thrilled about John's report, including demographic information. It's really hard to see, but I'm really excited about that and appreciate that. Still a little worried about the vacancy situation. I know you all are working hard and you have a really hard deadline coming up. So anything we can do to help you meet that deadline, so everybody can take a deep breath and move on into the future? That would be great. I think the future does need to include an attention to the needs of current residents who have been very patiently waiting for progress as, as you all get things straight with HUD and get your vacancy rate under control. So we do look forward to that future and also very much looking forward to the budget and the capital fund. And we wanted to suggest having an additional community meeting about the capital fund, since it was very difficult to get outreach done for that and gain broad participation. So hope you'll take that under advisement, and I always encourage commissioners to ask lots of questions of Mr. Gilmore and lots of questions of Mr. Kessler, who's here also, to get really in tune with redevelopment and the future that is really here and arriving right now as we speak. Thank you.
If anybody else would like to address the commission at this time, please click the raise hand icon. Or if you're joining us by phone, press star nine. And we have Don Gathers. Don, you're on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Just real quickly, thank you all for the meeting. Two, wanted to really thank and welcome Brother Gilmore for being here this evening. And thanks to the city for the donations or the contribution, the monies that they put forth for the, the Stop the Violence Program that he is very much out in front of. And just looking forward to hearing his, his presentation on this.
And if anybody else would like to address the commission at this time, please click the raise hand icon. There are no more hands raised, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And again, there's another moment for a public comment at the end of the meeting. On the agenda, next we have a redevelopment update. Mr. Sales, where did you go? I can't see. Sorry, my boxes got rearranged.
We did move the redevelopment update a little hidden agenda. We have Jay Kessler here to give that update. I didn't want to take up a lot of his time. So Jay Kessler has been working as the owner's rep for the construction. So we're presenting the housing authority in that capacity as the project manager.
And Mr. Kessler, oh, sorry, before you begin, I don't know, there may be people that don't know what you do. So maybe you could explain what an owner's rep is really quickly to those who might not understand how, you know, how important your position is for helping us.
Thank you, John and Betsy and Brandon for, for the introduction and for the commissioners for having me tonight and for the opportunity to work on the redevelopment. So I am, I work as an owner's rep, as a representative, as a consultant really to your development partner, Affordable Housing Group LLC that was set up. But effectively, I represent owners who have a significant role to play. And in this case, the owner is different than my normal clients, because it really is A H G at CRHA and it's FAR. Owners have a significant role to play in the success of their design and construction projects. I bring a 30-plus-year construction background. I started working as an owner's rep, working on my own in 2010. So I've been doing this a little over 10 years. And effectively, I bring a skill set to a team who is building a project that they, that may not reside on their staff. I mean, CRHA, FAR does not have a need every day, at least up until now, does not have a need every day to have somebody with project development and construction experience, who knows the design side of the project, the building side, manages budgets, tries to keep the two firms that are under contract to the owner, which are the architect and the contractor, moving in the right direction and accountable for what they committed to when they went into contract to either design or build the construction project. So that's what I do is, is bring that set of skills to a team. Y'all know affordable housing and housing policies. And in my year plus working on this, I've learned things about HUD lingo and requirements that I never dreamed of knowing. And glad we have those experts on the team to manage all that. And hopefully I bring an expertise to help manage the, the design and construction side of the project. So any questions about that? And I am a lifelong resident of Charlottesville. I've been here since 1959. So it is exciting for me to, to have a role in this work. I understand the importance of it and, and thrilled that it's moving forward in Charlottesville. Updates, we do have one project underway. I think, as it mentioned, we, we did the muddy part of breaking ground on February 8th. We've had some challenging weather in the first part of the schedule, but the contractors pushing to overcome that and keep things going. The project completion date is June 20, 2022. So that's when we can look forward to having those 62 new units. Right now, they are working on getting erosion and sediment control set up, getting security fencing up, getting signs and banners up so people know what's going on when they drive by, if they're not familiar with it. The next big milestone to look forward to, if, if weather starts to cooperate a bit, will be the first week or so of April of having the first building pad ready. So by the time we get into later April and May, we'll start to see vertical, vertical construction happening when we get to May and, and things really starting to take shape. So seeing Bruno and John and the CRH, CRHA team here, they're dealing with the other aspect of this product, project and side effect, which is they're moving out of the maintenance building, which is a stress on their operations. But come March, that building will be demolished to make way for some of the utility work that has to happen. So any questions on South First Street? On Crescent Halls, we're not quite as far along. We are in the final stages of trying to negotiate the contract and guaranteed maximum price, the contract price with GMA Construction out of Chicago. I think by most of you know that Cornelius Greggs has been involved in this project for, we were talking about that today. It's, he's probably got two years into it. So I think we're all excited of, of trying to get to that finish line. We had hoped to be there at end of last week, didn't quite get to where we have a, a final contract in place and all the information and, and documents that Jeff Meyer needs to get us to closing. Once we get all that, Jeff needs about a week to close. So presuming we, we get done this week, Jeff should have us closed by March 5th, thereabouts. Well, I would expect GMA and their local partner, Martin Horn Construction, their, their local team, to start having a presence, setting up their construction office facilities, et cetera, by mid-March. And come early April, we would start to see some actual construction activities on site. Their plan is to start on the roof, re-roofing of the building once the eighth floor is vacant, so that we don't have too much noise for residents living there and to start demolition on eighth floor. That schedule is dependent on residents voluntarily agreeing to relocate to other units in Crescent Halls. I know the CRHA team has been working on that and I believe, you know, right now has all the voluntary relocation agreements secured, or at least verbally, residents are happy to, I think, to see this finally get going. I don't, I can't share with you if we start early April, when the completion date would be, we, we think it's going to be about a 19-month project. That has not been affirmed up and finalized yet. Again, one of the things for this week, but that would put the completion sometime out there in fourth quarter of, of '22. So looking forward to getting that project started. There'll be challenges with being occupied during the renovations, but that's gotten a lot of discussion, a lot of planning. That will, you know, we'll keep an eye on all that and communication as we go. Any questions about the Crescent Hall project status? So on both projects, the last thing I'll share is on both projects, I meet with the owner and, I mean, the architect and contractor team twice a month. We go over nitty-gritty project details, review where they are on schedule. How do we overcome challenges? Review pay apps, things like that. Then those are on a Tuesday. The Thursday following each of those meetings, we've established vision keepers meeting. We had our first one. We have our second one coming up this Thursday, so it'll be two weeks since our first one. And that's a group of CRHA, FAR, Legal Aid, and residents from both the South First Street and Crescent Halls communities. And it's a chance for me to update them in more detail than I've done here on the project status, identify, you know, challenges that we have, input that we need, feedback that we need, things that need to be, you know, would help to communicate out into the, to the two communities so that residents know, we've just gotten that started. We will refine that process as we go. And we need to, to solve how we're gonna disseminate that information farther out into both the Crescent Halls and South First Street communities as, as this team learns to, to work together and, and meet those challenges of communications. So unless there are questions, that's my, my update, and I really appreciate it.
Okay, questions? Comments? Any, okay. No.
I'm just wondering if, like, what, so I know you mentioned the weather's been a challenge. I'm wondering about just like, are there potentially any other delays that we might? I mean, I know nobody anticipated anything like COVID, but I'm just wondering about things like the closing and the financing. Is there anything we need to be aware of as a potential sticking point moving forward?
So on South First Street, you're closed and ready to roll. Money for the project is in place. You know, there'll be the typical, for me, typical things in construction that the contractor will need to, to resolve about material deliveries and coordination and all of that. That in this project, in new construction, really the biggest challenge to schedule that's not in the owner, I mean, in the contractor's control is whether the way the contract is set up is that there are a number of weather days to expect each month based on historical NOAA averages. And if there is adverse weather, greater than that, and we define that by the amount of rain or amount of snow in each event, then yes, the contractor is allowed to request additional time each month. And we will have a log and track that and agree or disagree whether or not we're in excess of the historical average. On Crescent Halls, once we get to closing, and Jeff assures us that as soon as we have everything finalized with the GMA, he has got bank financing, everything in place, lawyers are ready to go. Once we get to closing, we'll agree on a notice to proceed and start date with GMA and, and their contract time will start to tick at that point. On that project, weather really won't be a concern. I mean, we're inside the roof they're gonna do early. So if weather impacts them and it takes them an extra two weeks to complete the roof, that won't delay their overall schedule. It's not on the critical path. And same with the site work being done. They're, they're forecasting about six months of site work over a 19-month project. I think they'll have time to do that without delaying completion. So there our risk more is in our ability to relocate from four to four in the period of time allowed, which is two weeks to get residents. So when they finish eighth floor, restaurant, you know, renovation, and it's brand new, residents from six-four will have to move up to eight to clear six to, to start renovations there and, and move our way down through the building. So the owner has a responsibility to get that relocation done. And then it is a 1975 building. And we think we know the building and have looked around a lot, but they could do demolition on a floor and we could run into something concealed and unexpected. I think those odds are limited, but not, not Zebra. And that would be the other place. And then COVID does present, present some, some issues with, with supply, supply chains. I've, I've got another project going on. We ordered some different hardware. The owner didn't like some door hardware function the way it was originally designed. And yeah, we told, we're told it would be in, in February, and then all of a sudden we got a notice because of COVID. It'll be end of April. So hopefully we don't get caught by that and COVID will start to be in there. So hopefully we don't get caught by that and COVID will start to be in everybody's rearview mirror, but there is an exposure there and both contracts do make that the owner's liability to provide extra time if, if that happens. So I appreciate the question.
Thank you.
That was my question too, is what is the, you know, what, what's in place for, for materials? Because I know that several places are having trouble getting materials to be able to complete projects.
Neither contractor has identified any, but they, as I said, in the negotiation of both contracts, they both reserve their right to request a time extension if they get caught and, and you know, if they identify that they can't get, you know, door hardware from this manufacturer that we were planning, you know, we also have the option to look at other manufacturers who may be able to meet the date and they can, you know, get out of one agreement and move to another and we'll look at how to mitigate those effects if and when they come up.
I mean, two-by-fours are hard to find right now. And they're about, you know, what, four, five, six times the cost at this point?
Yeah. And that's again, yeah, so that's a definitely an issue on South First Street. But I know our contractor, Breeden Construction, factored the cost risk into their contract. So if the market changes, they, they're at that risk, not, not us, not the, you know, not the owner. And as far as delivery, I know they're already working with their suppliers to buy out the, the package and ensure delivery. And unfortunately, they're not going to those like us and paying that four or five times the price. But yeah, the wood market is crazy.
Great. Other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Kessler, for your time.
Well, thank you all and I appreciate it and I hope you have a good meeting and I'll look forward to joining you again.
Great. Mr. Sales?
Yes.
Question for you. Is Mr. Gilmore going to, on, on my agenda? I don't have, I'm trying to think, yeah. Will he be presenting this evening?
Yeah, he's going to present during, during my time. Last minute thing, the agenda was already posted, so we'll add him to mine. It's addressing safety during COVID.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't.
Yeah, he'll, he'll speak during my time, a portion of it.
Okay, great, wonderful. So, and also on, in terms of redevelopment, maybe Kathleen can speak to this, but there will be a virtual groundbreaking ceremony. Oh, she's writing about it in the chat. Oh, moved to March 7th. And unfortunately, you know, for COVID, we can't bring a, a large group of people together, but we can mark that this is very exciting, you know, first groundbreaking for CRHA, well, in, in many years. And I'm thinking, you know, hopefully when there is something called the ribbon cutting at the end, when people are moving in, we can have an in-person, much larger celebration. So Kathleen mentioned it's on March 7th and there'll be some details if anyone wants to log in and just hear more about the project. Okay, so updates from commissioners, board sessions, which were canceled. We have approval of the minutes from November 23rd, 2020. Seems like a long time ago.
So I will just make a motion for approval.
All seconded? Okay. Can we get a, a roll call, a vote on the minutes?
Leslie, are you here? If not, I'll do it.
Her name is, her name is something.
Yeah, she's up there, but I think her audio, she may be having some audio issues. Commissioner Dr. Henry? Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Chair Rucker?
Yes.
Okay, and it's approved. And Ms. Goldblatt, do you want to give us a, a brief safety committee update?
Yeah, I'm really excited to hear this presentation by Mr. Gilmore. So the safety committee most recently has been considering a camera policy. We've worked it back and forth for some time and it should be going to the board pretty soon. But it's an attempt to co-author the policy with residents, but also to make sure that residents really feel like they have control over how cameras will be used on their properties. So we've talked a lot about that. And then there's been some discussion just around like lingering safety concerns, some of which have subsided because of the winter weather, but I think people are looking forward to the spring and thinking about ways to prevent violence before it happens. There's a lot of interest in community-based solutions. A lot of people would really love to hear from community members and there's been some talk about inviting people to come present at the safety committee meetings about some of these initiatives, especially given the situation with COVID, that a lot of the solutions people have posed require presence together, which is hard to do right now. So there has been some talk for the next meeting about the question of a, of a loitering policy and we've got some legal questions about whether or not loitering is actually an issue, whether or not we want a policy, but we're hoping to start a conversation with residents about that, to have some questions answered by CRHA staff and by some of the lawyers to see what it is that we want. And then Ms. Lynn Matthews had, had talked a lot about community safety initiatives. We're hoping to start to hear more about those and think about ways those could be initiated in CRHA communities or re-initiated in some cases.
I just want to be on record, again, I know I've been a pain about this, but all of those, you know, camera policy, loitering, the towing, like all of those type of things, we just really have to make sure that, you know, it's a equitable process. It's going to be very hard to not misuse something like a camera policy and it's just making sure that whatever is presented and then ultimately voted on is, you know, fair and that we get as much input from as many families as possible and not just, you know, a few. I know that people thought that, you know, and it did take us a while to get to even what the Buck Squad piece on the street, what they are hoping to do in the community, but they are very different approaches than we traditionally had. And I would just like for us to think about what does those non-traditional remedy, hopefully remedies look like and whether we make, you know, immediate investments in these very traditional modes. Again, got beat up about not being for safety, but I am for safety. I just want to make sure that people are not, you know, always under the, you know, big brother type watching every move you make and that once you implement things like cameras, you know, determining what loitering means and who is violating it, it just brings in this very, I think authoritarian and paternalistic approach to things that I just want us to be just very mindful of.
Yeah, when it comes to the camera policy, we should say like there's still, there is no policy right now and that means that residents have an opportunity, residents and community members have an opportunity to say that they don't want cameras at all or they don't want them to be used in ways that the policy has been written. And so the, the draft policy has gone out and read statements, but we will be hosting the meeting so we can always come back to the camera policy if people come on March 2nd at 6:00 PM and they want to talk about it, there's no reason not to return to it. We'd initially planned, but it got canceled because of the snow, a 4:00 PM meeting, since a lot of families at South First Street said that 4:00 PM on Tuesdays or Thursdays worked for them. And so we thought maybe that would work, but it got canceled because of the snow, but we'll be rescheduling something like that in March to see if that time works better. But we do want to hear really widely from, from residents because I don't think that anyone who's been attending those meetings wants to feel like they live in a police state, but I think they've also seen the ways that that's not, that that's not an effective way to be healthy and safe. So, so yeah, I, I am, I'm really, I really am looking forward to hearing more about these approaches that consider safety more holistically and less about a reaction that you call the police after something's happened.
All right. Any other questions from Ms. Goldblatt? Right. Thank you for continuing those meetings, to chair those meetings. Do, 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 do. Oh, okay. So now we have, we're going to discuss the official CRHA redevelopment and committee membership. Kathleen, I don't know if somebody has the image, I can look for mine, that we could maybe share the screen of the list. I'll give a little bit of background. The redevelopment committee was established because we needed a way to make decisions and move forward on just how, the timeline and where to start, honestly, how to start the ball rolling. Eventually that was formalized into a voting membership. Again, being able to move forward, hire contractors, enter into partnerships. Some of the people originally on that committee are no longer with us. So we need to update it. And maybe, I think for now, maybe we just talk about updating it and whether or not the number is correct or, you know, other amendments may be taken up in the redevelopment committee itself. But the, the committee itself is, it's been focused mostly on South First Street and Crescent Halls over the past year or so, because that's the most pressing, you know, needing to get that moving along. But initially it was established to kind of take the longer-term planning and timeline of all the properties and how to move through and improve all of them in whatever way is appropriate. Just so you know, for, for people who may be interested in, in joining that. Mr. Sales, did we need to vote on anything or just update?
Well, we need to have a discussion on who the, the board representative, because we have a board position open because of Mr. Osteen's resignation. I believe Alice Washington was already voted on. And I don't know how the executive director position is handled. I don't think we need to vote on that one because I think it probably goes by the executive director, not the person in the position. So only one we need to handle now is the commissioner.
Okay. Quickly, I'm just looking for the list to bring it up.
I have it, but I can't script, share the screen.
Oh, it's a webbing, yeah.
So.
I just sent it to Betsy.
Okay, thanks. I don't know if I can share either, but I'll, I'll try. So go ahead, Ms. Walker, if you, I'm just going to see if I can bring it up or not.
Yeah, I just, it has you already on there and then it's the replacement for Osteen's position. And I just want to kind of throw myself back out there again, as wanting to make sure that I am a part of this makeup.
Sorry to be slow, I'm trying to.
Is that something, do we make comments, do we vote on this? Do we make comments? I mean, that makes a lot of sense to have the mayor on the committee.
I second it.
Is this the same meeting that people just said would be changed till five o'clock, the third Tuesday or something, Thursday, sorry?
The first, first person every month at five o'clock.
Am I sharing, sorry. Do you all see that list?
No, you're sharing your screen, your documents, your desk documents.
That's helpful, okay. Never mind. Yeah, Ms. Green, I think the, the redevelopment committee has only, I mean, the actual membership was established for when there has to be a vote. Oh, thank you, Ms. Lynn Matthews, which hasn't happened very often, honestly. You know, it's only been on, you know, big decisions, what project is going to be begun first, the contracts. Anyone can come to the actual meetings. So this, honestly, this is for when there needs to be a vote. So that does not preclude people from coming and, and adding, you know, feedback and, and helping it with the, the committee. I'll also note that my, unfortunately, my term will be up in, I think, whenever it turns over in July, June or July, Ms. Slaughter and myself. So there'll be another place there for, for someone to step, a commissioner to step in. We, we could also, well, anyway, we can, we can have Ms. Walker as our designate, the, some of the other, I know that if one of us couldn't be there, we can always put, you know, that there is a substitute and other commissioner, sort of like the legal, legal aide has someone who is, they're the person that votes, but there's also a designate, you know, so the idea was that each partner in the projects would have someone voting, that, that's the main goal here.
Lisa, are you saying that you're interested?
I was just trying to understand what the difference, when we put our subcommittees together, I was trying to understand what the difference in those and this was, because I had been, I had expressed interest in that subcommittee, but it is not working out with my schedule to go to any of the meetings. And so I didn't know what the difference was. I did want to know, is there a, a place for a resident representative on this committee?
So we have, we have three resident representatives on the committee, Joy Johnson, Audrey Oliver and Alice Washington, all three residents. The three of the nine are residents.
So Joy is, okay, so Joy is not acting as a far, that's Brandon, okay. Just trying to.
If I'm wrong, I may be wrong, I don't know.
I'm just trying to understand the makeup, this is the first time I was, I feel like I'm seeing it, so I'm just trying to understand the makeup.
So Ms. Oliver and Ms. Washington are residents. Joy is too, but I don't know again, if she's representing for, Joy, are you, are you there? I can't see the screen now that it says on full screen. You're on mute. You're muted.
Joy.
Joy, you muted?
And I was just talking.
I wondered if you were talking to us or someone else.
Oh, gosh. That's my Zoom call fumble, I fumble every time. I'm not sure, I, I do have to go back and look at it. I know I was, I threw myself in because they didn't want me on the redevelopment. on the redevelopment committee, so I just submitted my name at the board meeting and they voted me in. So I don't know if they voted me in as a far representative or just a public housing resident. Because the way they were doing it, the way they were, the way they, the way they were doing it, they didn't want Joy Johnson on it. And so I just threw my name in at the ninth hour, and when they came back, they said I was on the redevelopment committee.
And, and I'm not suggesting, I'm just, first off, I'm willing to serve wherever I'm best suited. But I do want to make sure that I understand, I just didn't understand the difference between this particular committee and a subcommittee.
This, this is the subcommitting. The title is not going to, for some reason, when it was named, it was not titled Subcommittee, but this is the Subcommittee for the Board for Redevelopment. So I, I know more than two members wanted to be on the redevelopment and subcommittee. So we published it as a, as a public meeting when we were having every week, and we still publish it, so that's not an issue.
So we have a motion and a second. I guess we should vote at this point.
Yeah, and I would suggest maybe when the, when is it, next week? The redevelopment committee, the redevelopment meeting is at 5 o'clock, and perhaps we'll have, you know, different people who can come at that time. We can talk about whether this mix is still great, you know, this, this was, this was designed a couple of years ago now, so we can always question the lineup and whether we want to add another, more people, less, you know, whatever. I think it's up for grabs. But right now, we just need to, if there is a vote, we need to vote on Mayor Walker being that person who can vote in that position. Did we get a, did we get a second? We got a second, right? Okay, a roll call vote, all in favor of Mayor Walker replacing Mr. Osteen on the redevelopment subcommittee voting membership.
Is this acclamation vote or roll call, did you say? I'm sorry.
I think it has to be a roll call. It's a
Okay.
Mr. Sales, I'm sorry, can you do the roll call again?
Yeah, I think Leslie's back, so she's gonna do the roll call for this one.
Leslie, you're muted if, if.
Or maybe not.
If you can hear us.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor Walker?
Should I?
She's muted.
Can you say it again?
I need to abstain.
Attorney Olberg?
No, you don't, you do it the same, mayor.
Okay, so yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
So I think we're all good. I'm sorry, I did a bad job of tracking those.
Okay, my vote.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dr. Emery.
Yes.
It's been a long day, guys.
It's all right, it's all good.
We'll fix it in the, in the, in the meeting notes, Jenna, don't worry about it.
Please include, it's been a long day.
And I think in terms of the committee, since we're talking about them, because I was thinking some, a list would come out or something, but I haven't missed any other financial committee meetings, have I? We haven't started.
No, we haven't started the finance, finance committee, and we were waiting to found it, the finance director Mary Lou on board it. The maintenance committee will be starting soon. We will need another commissioner for that one, since Commissioner Osteen resigned. Resident Service Committee started, the redevelopment committee, of course, stopped, and the safety has stopped. Oh, and the personnel committee has not started either.
That's what I was asking.
To restart.
Personnel and finance, right?
Correct.
Non-personnel and, could we resend out that list?
I'm just writing a note. Update and resend the list.
Especially since they haven't been sent out. I'm like, I don't know what I've missed, maybe, but not.
Yeah, every time I see a meeting set up, I'm thinking, am I supposed
My, that committee.
So I, I wanted to ask tonight.
Yes, thank you.
We'll resend it and we'll note the times, and I believe the finance and, well, finance was waiting for Mary, our finance director to join, and personnel, personnel may be just talking to staff and seeing what time is, you know, good for everyone. So I'll resend that. And maybe we can even, I don't know, I keep imagining that we could have a board, like, Google Drive or something where we keep some of these documents if we lose them, but we can talk about that another time. Yeah, so I'll send that out.
Might not be a good, bad idea if your term is up.
That's, I, that's what I keep thinking, there are various documents. Probably most can be kept, well, we, we'll talk about this later, some can be kept with CRH, and some might be a separate place for, you know, commissioners that we keep over time. Okay. Um, so moving on, we have the executive director update.
Okay, that is me. So I want to start off by giving a special thank you to the mayor, Mayor Walker, and the city council. At their last meeting, they did approve, at least the first approval of two additional funding for CRHA's COVID-19 rental support program. And about two meetings ago, they funded the eviction prevention program, which is a new initiative that we're starting. It's to hire an eviction prevention coordinator and to provide some incentive money to, for the coordinator to use for individuals that are enrolled in a program, we're looking to help about 10 families per, per quarter. And so the incentive payments, the families will get on payment plans, and we will use the incentive funds to pay one of those payments that the family would have to pay. So then it gives them some incentive to stay on track, and our coordinator will be helping find financial training, which will help with budgeting. They'll be working with them to find job training, if that's one of their goals, and any other support that they may need in order to make them successful. So the goal is to reduce the impact of potential evictions after the moratorium has been lifted. Jay Kessler touched on one of the big things we've been working on, which is the office relocation. Probably about 80% or almost 100% of our operations will be affected by the transition due to redevelopment. Actually, it is 100%. So the ladies that were at the rental office at Crescent Halls has already, have already begun to move. We've have the HCV team at the Sixth Street Community Center. And the public housing managers will spread out amongst the different sites. So we'll have an asset manager at South First Street, an asset manager at West Haven. And then a third asset manager potentially at one of the two sites, just because we won't have any space at Sixth Street or Crescent Halls. And the Crescent Hall is over about two years before we get our space back there. The central office is slated to move, to be fully moved in at 110 Fifth Street Northeast, thanks to the city on April 1st. That is the office space beside the garage on Main Street. And the rental office will then begin transitioning to South First Street. Maintenance has already begun transitioning, because they have to be out of their space by April, I mean, by March 15th. So they're going to be moving to the community center at South First Street until July 1st, when they will move over to Avon Levy, which is the former site of Community Bikes and Agriculture Group. We are working to address the corrective action plan. We meet almost weekly to talk about where we are. One of the big things we've been focusing on now is occupancy. So we are, Brono and I probably meet or talk every day about where we are with our numbers. Right now, we have 35 vacancies outside of Crescent Halls. Of those 35, nine of them are ready, and we are expecting to lease them up by the end of the week. Brono's team started working on three new units today, and Habitat is still working on the six units at West Haven. So I've been looking at the schedule, and I pencil out almost every day, every night. It goes through my head, and I start working on the schedule where we are, tracking it almost by the day. So we are right on schedule to hit our occupancy goals. Financial, we are doing pretty good as, I mean, if you all look at the financial reports, we're doing pretty good. When it comes to all the amps, we're always looking for ways to find additional funding, to take the burden off public housing, because that is one of the indicators that they look at when they look at your financial viability, is how many months of reserve funding you have for each amp. So we've always tried to look for ways to repair that, because it has always been an issue, is not having enough reserve in case we have issues like COVID, or there's a government shutdown and there's no funding, a funding bill hasn't been passed, and that's happened a couple of times. So we are addressing that. We are looking at moving salaries to different places. We were awarded shortfall funding. We've looked at FEMA, using some FEMA funding to cover security and turnover of vacant units. So Kathleen has been working really hard on that, looking at other funding options out there. So we have a couple of different things we're going to be going through within the next week or two to increase the financial reserves at all the sites. So at the, the next financial report, you should see some additional funding on the sites, because we're going to go back and reprogram some funds that we have previously charged to the amp to create that viability for the sites. Kathleen touched on the groundbreaking for March 7th at 3 o'clock. The CFP is posted on the website, and the board work session is scheduled for Thursday at 5:00. And the draft annual budget should be posted by tomorrow. Tomorrow, close of business. I will take any questions before I turn the floor over to Mr. Gilmore.
I, I just have one question. When you were talking about just redistributing reserve money, does that mean, I know in the past, amps perform differently, and then money can be moved around. Is that, do they want to see a certain percentage of reserve in each specific amp? Or like a lump sum that can be drawn upon? Or, or what, I guess what I was questioning when you were saying that is, do we have to actually go in and put them in, put it in each amp? Or can it just be a?
Yes, they want, they want to sort of see that each amp has three to four months worth of reserve in case there was a financial issue, and they were sustainable for those three to four months.
Thanks.
Yes, each amp will have to be able to show its viability.
Thank you. And how, just, we, we can talk about it later, but when Crescent Halls is in the midst of being renovated, I guess those units are offline, so they don't count. That's a hard one there to, to.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll try to explain it one as best as I can. So, right now, the units count against us. The units count against us until they, there's a signed contract between us and a contractor to do the redevelopment. So right now, it counts against us. We, I mean, Melinda and I got off the phone with HUD maybe at like 5:30, and that was like, some of the last comments that we made was, hey, why are you all counting Crescent Halls? We know, you all have identified them, that they're going to be under HUD-approved modernization. So why do we still count them? They still want them to be tracked, and their justification is that 53 of them will still be public housing. And my response was, well, we have 79 of them occupied as public housing, so only look at the 53. That is not what they want to hear. They want to look at the 105. So until we have a contract with GMA in place, they will continue to look at that as a vacant unit, even though we know we're not going to spend any money to turn it, because we need it to be vacant, so we can relocate families to our redevelopment.
Thank you. Wondering about that same thing.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay.
All right, so tonight I asked Mr. Gilmore to come here from the Buck Squad. We all know, we've had a lot of safety concerns on our sites, and the residents have requested that we do something to address the safety issues. And there's been a lot of organic work done in the community, and Mr. Gilmore is a part of that, and is the executive director of Guns Down, and is, was the creator of Buck Squad. So we have invited him here, talk about that, and see where we can have a partnership, and we can provide some assistance on our end. And he can help us out on our end to address the safety issues, because we know we can be here all day talking about what will work, but unless it's coming from the community and there's community buy-in, it's going to fall on deaf ears. So Mr. Gilmore, he was here tonight, let us know what he's doing with Buck Squad, and how we can help him, and eventually help us address the safety issues that the residents are coming to us with. Mr. Gilmore, thank you for coming here, and please let us know where we can be of some assistance.
Thank you for having me, everyone. I appreciate the invite. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, I appreciate the invite. One of the things that, you know, like Ms. Walker, Mayor Walker knows, we try to be as transparent as possible to let the community know exactly what we're doing, so they can have a feel of not only the specific parts of the program, but also the effectiveness. But just to explain to you, the basic foundation of the program, as, as Mr. Sales was saying, I am the executive director of Guns Down, Inc., which is a Brooklyn-based program, organization, excuse me, that is centered around reducing gun violence. And we saw the need for the program to be here, the organization to be here, because of the, the recent homicides, you know, what we just experienced in the last few months in this city was it had never happened before, you know, in this small amount of time, and it's something strange to me. It was something that was unique. And as an individual who comes from the environment, I had a friend who was killed on December 27th on South First Street, right across the street from the church. His name is Jamarcus Washington. We call him Buck. And he was a good kid, you know, he was younger than me. But as I always tell people, it was the catalyst for a lot, a lot that's going on inside of me internally, to try to do something to remedy the situation. On December 28th, I came to Charlottesville, because I was living in Richmond, and I met with some, some guys who were already doing things in the community, guys who had a certain feel for the community, because they were from the community. And I picked together a team of 15 individuals who had, who followed my vision. I told them my vision, I told them my plan. You know, I told them how I thought that we could remedy the situation and help it. And we had a roundtable with a couple of individuals, what we call high-risk individuals, those who are basically running certain neighborhoods in the city to try to get an understanding of what was going on, why was, why was these violence being so rampant the way it were? And we come up with a, we came up with an understanding and a solution. The best fit, what we thought, you know, could be something that would be effective, and that is to do, to do violence interrupt, violence interruption, to be preventive and proactive in identifying a potential problem before they happen, and also giving the community a and also giving the community a resource. You know, a hotline where they could call us when certain individuals saw that things, you know, the spark was started that could lead to a potential act of violence with guns. We believe that, you know, these guys are communicating with guns because they don't, they have never been taught to communicate verbally and orally, to work through their problems. But the group that I assembled, the team that I assembled, us having a firsthand knowledge, because we were actually immersed in our lifestyle at one time, we have a firsthand knowledge, you know, of how things can arise from one word or from one action, and able to identify the problem and to come to, to come to some kind of agreement or solution where we can try to, you know, try to solve it. So informally, we gave our numbers out to everybody in all the housing authorities and one other, and two other housing sites, Friendship Court and Fifth Street, it used to be called Prospect. And we gave our numbers to individuals who we knew were credible, who were streetwise and were connected to the community, males and females. And if they saw anything, if they saw a beef about to rise, they could call, they could call, they could call my number. And the number that I had, you know, called individual number, I would dispatch guys out according to what neighborhood they grew up in or who I knew that they were related to or, you know. Our job is about relations. So I was able to dispatch guys to certain individuals, what we call high-risk individuals, to isolate them and to put them in a situation where they could calm down and think and make sure that the removal, they couldn't be connected with each other, they're both parties, and we could resolve a conflict. And it worked. You know, the first week, we did, I think I told Ms. Walker, we did seven, I think, seven resolutions that first week. And three of those individuals, as we call in the hood, they were known as shooters. They would, they would be taken serious. If they was threatening somebody, you could, these threats were serious, you know, from past experiences in the street. But we were able to get inside, you know, get inside, meet them at a coffee shop, you know, you know, take them to isolated places and have a dialogue with them. And then also, once they agreed, you know, to, you know, to calm down and have a peace, you know, a peace meeting, we were able to do something called a commitment sheet. We made it, we did, we do assessments and we do something called a commitment sheet where the guys, they sign off on it. And the commitments, the commitments are designed by my team and the individuals. And it is something that they adhere to according to how they see it. And from those conflict resolutions that we did that first week, none of those guys had a problem with each other ever again. So it works. In the process of doing that, I had one individual, when I go, I sent one of my guys out about two o'clock in the morning to a situation, and he got a gun pulled out on him. So it was a situation where his life was at risk. And I knew that we were operating off of instinct, you know, off of the love that we have for the community, of trying to heal the community and being, and being a part of the solution. So, but I knew we had to have some more, it was more to it. So I investigated. And I came across something called Cure Violence. And Cure Violence is a nationally renowned organization that trains individuals to do the work that we was doing informally. And one of the guys, Marcus McCallister, a nationally renowned, I mean, internationally renowned individual who has done conflict resolutions in Trinidad, Israel, Mexico, Chicago, New York, all the hotspots all over the world. I made, I made contact with him and I asked him, would he be willing to come in and train, you know, train my team? Because we were dealing with these situations where lives were at risk and somebody could lose their life. It's for thirty thousand dollars. I took it to Ms. Walker and a city council. They had informally.
You were frozen for a while?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Where did I stop off at? When I was frozen?
Yeah, you were talking about, it was right after the seven in one weekend, the process was in the process of what.
Okay. If I get frozen again, someone, please wave a hand, please. But the seven conflict resolution, we were very effective. We stopped, we stopped, we stopped seven potential shootings. The individuals that were involved, I know their history, because at one point I was in the street and I dealt with these individuals on the street level. And I believe in my heart and my team believes that we had not stepped in, that it would have been something that could have been fatal or someone could have been hurt. Over the last, since December twenty-seventh, we have done a number of conflict resolutions in the city housing. Most of our conflict resolutions are done on the property of the housing authority. You know, my team, the team that I have chosen, they are credible. They are streetwise, connected to the community. They're able to relate to the high-risk participants that, you know, that we come in and counsel. And we are empathetic because we have once been in that same, you know, in the same space, in the same mind state that they are. And so we're very effective in our communication. And our credibility allows us where we can actually have a conversation with them, because the guys are used to not having conversations. You know, usually they communicate with violence because they come from, they come from environments of violence. You know, the low-risk, the black community, we already know disenfranchised. A lot of the times, the perpetual cycle of destruction is led by violence. You know, something that we was taught as a child, something that was handed from our paternal and maternal forebears, things that we saw. And we have the ability and the capacity at this moment in time right now to stop it. And this is the first time that I ever seen anything like this happen before in my life. And even me being a part of it is mind-blowing that, that we are put in this situation and it works. You know, because all this, it started with a love and it started with love for the community and a passion, you know, to help heal. But we went through a training. We went through a seven-week training, thanks to Mayor Walker and the city council who gave us, who gave us, I raised sixteen thousand dollars on my own. I got ten from the University of Virginia. I got five from a place called Carver. And Pastor Edwards out of the church on First Street gave me a thousand dollars. So we raised sixteen thousand dollars on our own, because that's how important this trainer was. And Mayor Walker and city council covered the rest. And the training was phenomenal. What we went through, we thought we knew everything when it comes to the street, but as far as the interaction or how you interact with these high-risk individuals or participants, as we call it, we learned different methods. We learned how to organize as a business. We learned how to organize as a unit, as an actual structure where we could be more effective at our jobs, you know. And we have an actual board where you have a site director. We have a manager. And then we have something called community outreach workers and violence interrupters. And the community outreach workers are trained to go in and do needs assessments in all of these housing authorities in the neighborhoods and to kind of hang out and to be a presence in these neighborhoods and to identify, detect violence before they happen. And interrupt the violence before they happen. And it works. It been working, it been working, it been working since we started it. I think most importantly, that in order to be an effective member, an effective person in this community as far as stopping this, you have to come from the same place. You know, we speak the language of the people, because we are the people. My team, now I have a twenty-member team, twenty staff members were trained. So they have the specific qualities to go out and do the work the way it's supposed to be done in an organized fashion, in ways that they can be safe, in ways that they could be effective, and in ways they can save lives. The workers are responsible, like I'm going to backtrack a little bit. The workers are responsible for identifying and detecting violence, for interrupting the violence. And also, we do follow-ups, because we're trying to change the behaviors and norms. We're trying to change the psychology and the mental aspect of this. It's not something that we just stop the violence, but we have a part of the program where they come in and they get the mental health evaluations, substance abuse evaluations, needs assessment, anything that we could provide to them, you know, we provide to them. A lot of my guys, they were taken off of work to do the job. Sometimes I had to give them calls while they at work. And like three of my guys had two full-time jobs. And for the love and just for the passion and just for the want and the desire to, you know, to make our community better for our children, because our focus is on the babies, our next generation coming up. They take off their jobs. They'd have been missing time. So we're in a position now that we are actually a 501(c)(3) corporation and we need money, we need funds to be raised so we can pay these guys, you know, you know, for their, for their work. But getting back to what I was saying, my workers are responsible for identifying and detecting violence, interrupt, interrupting the violence, changing behavior norms and changing community norms. Each, the structure is built upon a program manager, a supervisor, five outreach workers, five violence interrupters, and hospital responders. In case we have a shooting that we couldn't stop, we have an individual with his trade to go to the hospital and deal with the victims and deal with the victim's family. And they've been trained by the best, like I said, Marcus McCallister. Our job is, our specific job is to be preventive and proactive and to identify these situations before they happen, so they won't happen. And what I am asking, the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority, is to allow us to be a functioning movement, a functioning organization inside of these housing projects. We have three hotspots that we have identified throughout the city. The first hotspot we call is Zone One, which is South First Street, which a lot of the violence has been perpetuated at. The second hotspot is West Haven. And the third hotspot is Prospect or Blue Grays Guards or Fifth Street on the Green, I think what they call it now. Well, it doesn't have anything to do with the Housing Authority, but I'm in, I'm in the in reality stages of of having a dialogue with, you know, with the director over there. So we have the support of Mayor Walker, who has been, man, an advocate and ally with us, you know, through the entire process, because she comes from this, she comes from the same environment that we come from. So she knows the struggle. And I have a dialogue with the other city councils who hold a direct sympathy. You know, I can't say empathy, but they hold a sympathy and care, you know, towards the situation, because they see how important it is. And I think the fact that the shooting happened on Emmett Street caused everybody to wake up, because this is a situation that been happening in black communities since I was born. It been happening, it been happening, I'm forty-five years old. I'll be forty-six this year. I can remember this all my life. But now that it's affected communities outside of us, it's seen as a problem. But it been a problem all along. But you have guys who are now ready. We are trained. We have, we have over, if you accumulate the ages of experience, we have, we have over a thousand years' experience with my guys as far as the age, as far as dealing with this kind of situation. The wisdom that we possess, the knowledge that we possess, can't nobody do this job but us. And it's been shown and proven through the work that we have done. I keep all data and I keep all records and I'm transparent. And I have an open relationship with Joe Patania and the Commonwealth Fraternity who helps me along so we can stop this violence, man, and stop these babies from dying. It's not a good thing to have, to have, one of the hardest thing, and I'm going to keep saying this everywhere I talk, the hardest thing for me is to, is to answer the question when mothers be asking me, why is my son dead? When I have no answer. Why is my son dead in the street? And if anyone have kids, if anyone, matter of fact, raise your hand if you have kids. I don't know how you could answer that question. And it's very important that we never let that happen again. I'm not saying that we can stop every, every incident of violence. You know, I'm not Superman. My team, I'm not superhuman. But the work that we do is important in reducing it as much as possible. We kill, we love what we do, because we helping our community. And we are trained now. You know, we're certified to go in, which is very important. You know, the Buck Squad, the acronym, if you don't know, it means Brothers United to Cease the Killing. And next week, I'm going, I'm sending five of my workers out, five of my staff out to do a key community assessments through the entire low-income community in Charlottesville, so we can get a feel of what's going on. I'm in the process of sending two of my violence interrupters to go to all the high-risk participants or the high-risk individuals in the city, shop callers, as we call them, and to have a dialogue with them so we can try to get this thing at the top, so we won't have any more killing. You know, we do it for the love, but we need, we need actual, we need funds, we need funds behind this, man, because what happened is we have developed into a, this has developed into a career. I left my job in Richmond when Jamarcus Buck Washington died. I left my job in Richmond. And I came up here and I left everything and I come up here just to do the work, just to do what I need to do to make this situation better, because ultimately I am the cause of this. You know, at one point, I was the prototype and the epitome of what it was to be a gangster. And my team, we all come from the same background, but we had an awakening and we want the best for the community. And I always tell people, wherever I go in the United States, I come from a beautiful city. I come from a city that cares. I come from a city, we have problems, as we see from 2017. We have a divisive spirit here. But we have, overall, the spirit is beautiful. We have a loving, second-chance community. I've never been to a city like this before. And we have the opportunity to stop this thing right now before it gets out of hand. And what happens, and I'm going to tell you something, it's been a product of the street. If you don't catch this thing now, it's going to evolve. It's going to evolve to something that the police can't handle, because, and just from my own experience, you know, pretty soon, the police might start getting attacked. You just don't know with violence. We believe that violence is a public health issue. Violence behaves like a contagious disease, is like an epidemic. And, you know, when you're treating an epidemic, the first thing you do is cut the transmission. You know, violence has to carry the risks of an epidemic. And if you do not cut the transmission, what's going to happen is, like, just like what's going on now with the COVID-19, epidemics start through clustering, then they spread, and the transmission gets rapid till it gets out of control. And that's where we at. You know, we trained to be violence interrupters, and we're good at what we do. And that's my own humble opinion. And I think Mayor Walker and the city council, Joe Patania and Chief Brackney and Captain Mooney, I think they all can confirm what I just said to you. And we want to have some kind of partnership with the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority, where we can have, in those two hotspots that I just named, South First Street and West Haven, Zone One and Zone Two, where we can have some kind of site there, where I can have my guys there twenty-four hours a day. I can have them working their shifts. I know in the summertime, what's coming up with the spring, that, you know, what we call the hotspot times is going to be probably from ten PM to maybe four PM. That's where most of the shootings happen, you know, as I did to study other statistics. And I want to have guys there all the time, you know. And I want to put them in a position where, you know, this is their career now, man. These guys have bought into my vision. You know, they bought into it. You know, they sit in this training and it was arduous. This training wasn't easy, man. You know, I had a lot of tears in my, you know, my team. I never seen some of these guys who are so-called ex-gangsters. They shed a lot of tears, because a lot of things were touched inside of them, you know. So this stuff is real for us, man. You know, this stuff is, this stuff is going on. It's something that we dedicate our life to. You know, as a black man, as a black man coming from a black community in the Charlottesville of Virginia, we understand, as black men and women, we understand that we helped create this problem. You know, we created situations of our own lives by the decisions that we made. And early in our life, we made some bad decisions, man, but we were only doing what we were taught. You know, most of us come from single-parent households. And one thing I tell my guys and I tell everybody in the world where I go.
We can see you, but we can't hear you.
Now it's muted.
Hello?
Yes, you're back.
Okay, I believe, and this is my own personal belief, I believe that the woman is the most powerful entity on the face of the planet Earth. And I say that because of what she has to endure with raising children. But in the black community, we have a lot of single mothers, but it's biologically impossible for them to teach a boy how to be a man. They can nurture them, they can cultivate them, and they can shower them with love, but it's impossible. And that's why you got the problem. That's a part of the problem. And what we trying to do is, man, we trying to stop this generational curse, where we can get to these boys and get to these men now, get them, get them the help that they need, because the Buck Squad and Guns Down, we are not just violence interrupters. We have different chambers of the program. You know, we out there canvassing this week to get these guys inside the program called Common Grounds. And we have a re-entry program also. One of my guys just met with Martin Kuma today. An interview will be on the news tomorrow, where we have a block in the jail where we can kind of, we can, we can work with these guys. We have a curriculum for every program. We have a curriculum that is designed by myself through a therapeutic model and the professionals that I have around me, you know, trained. You know, trained professionals, G Cash, Recover, uh, and we're trying to saturate the entire community. You know, it's our job to do that. You know, as as a community, it's our responsibility and obligation to make, make sure that this problem stops now. You know, everybody been ignoring this thing now. Everybody been ignoring it, but now it happened on industry, so now everybody paying attention. And that's what needs to be done. Because one thing I learned about my past, and I'm gonna say this again, it been happening in my community since nineteen seventy-five. But now it untouched the other communities and other people. I don't want, I don't wanna see nobody have a child get hit by an innocent bullet, man. You know, I don't want, I don't wanna see that. You know, what we need is unity and consolidation and a spirit of love and a spirit of 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 uh of unity, man. And that's the way we gonna make it through this, you know. But I'm gonna let you know to the Housing Authority that we are here and we have a structured program. And I can email you everything. We have, we have, we have uh of everything that can possibly permeate and pervade every iota of this, of this community. And we gonna do everything we can to make this thing work. And just like I say, our, our track record has proven itself. We not gonna stop every shooting. But if you save one life, you did something. You know, if you did something, man. Well, you don't have to have a mother, you know, that's the hardest, that was, that's the hardest thing. As the executive director, I'm the guy that gotta go in and talk to these people, man. And it's hard, it's hard. You know, I had Donnell Burton, Jamarcus Washington's father, he called me every day and he keep asking me why. You know, but he's, it's an inspiration for me. And I tell him, on my watch, it's not gonna happen again. You know, it's, it's not gonna happen again. And I have a dedicated team, you know. You know, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna commend those brothers, man, because they pit down, they pit down their personal lives. Sometime they go off two thirty, three o'clock in the morning to address these situations. And and on our watch, nobody has died. And I thank y'all, I thank y'all for, I thank y'all for allowing me, you know, to to talk. And if there's any questions that need to be asked, you know, I'm, I'm here to answer anything. I wanna be transparent. But I wanna thank, I wanna thank Nakaya. You know, I, 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 I tip my head to you, Nakaya. You know, I really, I really appreciate you being an advocate and an ally to us, man. And I'm telling you, you know, no matter what's going on, you know, I really appreciate you because it was you who first believed in us. You know, you was out there, you saw, you saw the things that we done, and it was you who fought for us. And then in the process, like I said, the rest, everybody else just came on board. Because they saw, they saw that we were doing a good job and they saw what we, what we were doing, you know, well, it was, it was good. And you know, and that, and they're just not trying to take over this whole, this whole meeting. But I wanna thank uh the, the other councils because they, they have been instrumental also. Heather Hill, Lloyd Snook, uh I wanna thank Joe, I wanna thank Joseph Patania. I just met Cena Hill and Michael Payne. That was my first time meeting. They came, we had a, our graduation was Friday. You know, and they come, they come and just watched, just watched the graduation. And uh a lot of tears were shed in that room. You know, a lot of lives gonna be changed because of this, man. We just need, we just need your help and we need this to be a partnership. We can't do it alone. You know, we gotta come to some kind of agreement where we can be there, you know, all the time, man. You know, and if you know anyone, I'm talking to the entire city of Charlottesville and I'm talking to you, Mr. Sales, and everyone is on this call. We need funding. You know, we need funding to do this work. You know, it's taking a toll out on my team. You know, I had two members drop off because they can't, you know, they was losing too much time to work. You know, it broke my heart, you know, because they, they, they did, those two members did three uh conflict, conflict resolutions with people who are high-risk participants and were known as shooters in the neighborhood. So uh, you know, we work as a team, you know, we work as a team. And if you have, I'm, I'm gonna be quiet now. Congratulations, Joy, I love you. I'm so proud of you. I am so proud of you, uh, Donna. And uh if you have any questions, you know, I can answer any questions that that need be.
I, I do have one for you, um, for that.
Yes.
Um, the, the, your graduation or or the training, um, that's not something someone can see? Is that? You know, your training?
It was last Friday.
Yeah, it was Friday. I recorded some of it, right? I recorded uh, I recorded a little bit of it and I was
Someone there, I saw a little bit on your Facebook.
Yeah.
It was on my link, but I was just wondering, um, for someone who, you know, can't get out to whatever training you're doing or whatever, is that something available? Or maybe there's something that we can do as far as conflict resolution? Cause I even think that we need to have that training also.
Okay, I went through uh, I went through seven hour day training. Okay, my, my staff, my staff, they train from two to six. But the management, which was four of us, we had to train from uh, from ten always, always to six. With with a thirty minute, forty-five minute break in between. But the management, which is myself, Herbert Dickerson, Brian Page and Dee Smith, we certified to teach this now. So we can, we can teach it now. You know, we
That's kind of what I was looking for.
And I wanna do this. I wanna be a partnership with uh, with, with, you know, with people who wanna learn this, man, because like I said, we can't do this by ourselves, man. You know, we can, we can make a dent in this, but we can't do it by ourselves. But we, yeah, it's four of us, they can, they can train others now. Where we certified, we certified to do the work.
And I just wanna um say one thing really quickly, then I'll um open it up for everyone else, but Patel's used to this by now. But he made the statement about the police officers and something possibly happening. I just wanna clear that up, that no one has ever said that they would. That's something that could be um taken out of context. And so I just wanna make sure that when we are having these conversations, it um about no one else being hurt. Um, not making sure that we are, you know, headed towards um shootings that involve officers in either way. And um, but more importantly, cur, you know, making sure that we prevent what has been happening is community members harming one another.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you for that, Nakaya.
I don't wanna, well, they know I catch them all this.
Yeah, yeah. And just for clarity sake, what I did, I didn't mean, I didn't mean it, if it, if it did come out like that, yeah, I thank you for clarifying that.
But you didn't, I just wanted to make sure that no one hears it that way. I just wanted to make clear it up. But you know, I'm always catching and saying.
Yeah. And that's, that's it, Joy. Bullets have no name, bullets have no name at all. And that's, and that's key. Will you have guys, will you have guys, first and foremost, who don't love themselves? And my job, like I said, we don't just do conflict resolutions. We, our job is to maintain a caseload of these high-risk individuals, maintain contact, contact with them and give them the proper services that they need. And the first thing that I do when I, when I go inside these individuals' lives and and the first thing I do is I tell them, I love you, man. You know, I really love you. And they look at me like I'm crazy, man. They say, how can you love me? And I said, because you me. And they never had, most of the guys never had nobody tell them that. So they don't, they don't love themselves. If you don't love yourself, if you have no hope for you, then how can you love others or have hope for life for other people? So that's, that's, that's the distinguished, distinguishment that I wanna make. That's the distinctness that I wanna make about this. That our job is to give them hope. First, stop the violence, but also bring them in to get the proper services. You know, to get the proper services to address the underlying, the underlying uh thing that's going on. Because the fundamental roots, the fundamental roots of violence is the influence of one's peers, having a lack of attention or respect for yourself, having a low self-worth, not loving yourself. You know, a lot of these guys, as a child, experienced abuse and neglect. And now everything is being translated, you know, psychologically and mentally, where they have no value in life. But they are worthy of life. They are worthy to live. You know, they have some, they have people who love them. You know, they witness, a lot of these guys that I talk to, they had, they have been victims of violence as a child. They witnessed violence in their community, in their home, on the media. So they have been this, they have been, they have been desensitized, you know, to violence. And my job and my responsibility is to come in, help them heal, let them know that I love them, that I care. And that they are people who care about them. They are warriors out on the line that's fighting for their souls. And we creating a network that we can save these people, but to save the people, so we won't have to bury nobody. And the network, and I'm gonna tell you something that has been mind blowing to me, man. This is not a black thing. What I have noticed, when this call went out, black, white, red, brown, everybody answered. Everybody gets in car, everybody has, 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 has tried to get in contact with me or has, has contacted me. Because it's a human thing, man. You know, it's a human thing. I don't know if, if, if you really understand that. But it, it starts in my community. It starts in the African-American community. You know, low risk, disenfranchised, you know. We've been a result of the intentional minor code, assisted minor code destruction for a long time, and we gonna stop it. You know, my job is being a black man with some sense, a black man who love my community, a black man who love, who love to see a community healed. It's my responsibility because I created the problem and I was doing what I was taught. You know, I'm a product of my environment and it's my responsibility and obligation, as well as those nineteen members is on my team to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
I have a lot of questions, Mr. Gilmore, but maybe I'd like to have a, a one-on-one dialogue with you after this.
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I think there's some other things I'd like to add to your uh conversation, if you will.
Okay.
Maybe not appropriate for this meeting, but I'm very interested in the work you're doing. Uh, I'm very interested, uh, and I, I'm thankful for the work you're doing and your, and uh, but I, I do think that there's some things I'd like to, some other aspects, maybe I'd like to, to bring to the table to you, to think about.
Okay. Okay.
And I'll just, um, you know, Ed, I've been having this conversation since I've been on council about where the millions of dollars go per year that we um give to nonprofits um who say that they are doing the work. It has taken um a lot of years for people to start processing, forming nonprofits. Um, but now I think we actually have, um, you know, the ability, this is um, the third nonprofit that is spinning out of this call. And um, you know, to allocate those monies to individuals who can maybe actually get, um, you know, some of the
Work done.
Yeah, but also looking at, from a city perspective, something that I've been pushing for the past, um the entire time I've been there too, is trying to monitor the effectiveness of um the organizations that we are allocating money to so that we can measure that, those outcomes and the progress and make sure that we are you know, allocating money to um so I'm hopeful that some of that will start. This is definitely already starting a conversation about who continues to get resources. So that's um you know, that's something to think about. But also, um, I had a conversation, I've been having these conversations too, and I told um Joy that once she was better that um, you know, I wanted to talk about and in um sales report, it's also talking about the section three component of this, the, the jobs aspect and um what that means if we have community members that can help bring some of these individuals in, in this way now. Um, how that program could possibly look and um that it could provide some stability in long-term training. And if we can get people that stay with us the entire course of redeveloping all the so I've thrown that out there to Mr. Gilmore too, is something to process, um. Yeah, you know, I'm hoping that that's something that we can uh make work, cause it's not just about sustaining the organizations that are doing this work. It's also about um making sure that community members um have the skills and training so that they could um uh themselves. Part of our first discussion um was about um how, you know, the money that people may earn out in the world and how do you, how, how, when you're asking people to give that world up, what are you replacing? What are you replacing it with? And um people just don't know how, you know, what those options look like, cause we haven't um created them. And, you know, been able to direct them towards it. And so whatever that can open up, um, I hope that's something that we figure out.
Well, as it relates to CRHA, um I, I, jobs and things like that, you know, how this relates to, when you're talking about working with folks, I mean, sometimes it's about having a, a, a job. So I want, I wanna know how this per, particular program working with, with jobs. Um, you know, you mentioned some of um, um lack of self-worth and things like that. And I work with an organization um talking about homophobia. And, and I know that some of that is rampant throughout the African-American community as well. And some of that relates to some of the hate and hate, self-hate. And so I'm very interested in working with you on, on, in this, in this aspect, and that's what I was wanting to talk to you about. But also, um, how does this work with our new security system? And then what, um, what does this, um you're, it, what you said is you're working with our, our police department. And so how does that all intertwine? The, the police, our social services, I mean, for Region Ten and mental health is, are, are they involved with some of the uh, help with the mental health aspects of this? I mean, I, 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 there's just, I have so many questions. But, but I think what I'm hearing, I'm, I'm, and I've been following some of this on Facebook, so
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I think it's, it's good work, but I, I, I do have some things that I, I'd, I would like to talk to you offline about, for sure.
Okay, can I answer a couple, one of your questions?
Sure.
Okay, we don't, we don't, we don't work with the police uh directly because it would make, it would, we would lose our credibility with these people. Our job is in the field. So we trying to get it where the police never gets, gets to the neighborhood to handle a situation. You know, when it comes to the balance, once the police is involved, then I, you know, we, we drop the ball. Or we weren't there to, you know, to stop it. Our job is to have it where the police never come because we stopped it. You know, and as far as, one thing we learned in training, you know, one of the, the, the primary aspects of of, of, of us keeping our credibility is not to have a, a relationship directly with the police because we will lose all credibility. And we, and then no, no one will call us in our community, no one, no one will reach out to us. So we can't do that. Those are two separate entities. You know, I, we, we working, we working to stop whatever, you know, was uh the violence, but we are two separate entities. And we just can't have that just, just for the sake of doing our work. That's one of the things that Marcus McCallister's in a training and uh, and like I said, Ms. Green, we can have a dialogue about this, you know, one-on-one, and I could break it down. But this is what I advise everybody, everyone to do. If you are interested, on Lakeford Avenue, Pastor, Pastor Edwards, Mount African, uh, African Mount Zion Church on the corner of Lake, Lakeford and First, come at Thursday at six PM. We have an open meeting every Thursday at six PM where you can see what's really going on behind the scenes as far as getting these guys, mental health, substance abuse. Uh, we connected with all agencies, you know. It's, I call it the octopus. We touching all ass, we touching all, we touching all aspects of this. And Ms. Green, thank you for bringing up the homo, the homophobia thing because that's something, that's something, you know, a lot of people are, are are scared and they fear being who they are. But we want you to be who you are, but we want you to be it in a healthy way.
That's right.
You understand what I'm saying? And that's our job. That, go ahead.
And, 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 you know, you know, we had a disappearance which we still have not solved, you know, Sage Smith.
That's my nephew. That's my firstborn nephew. Deshaun Smith is my firstborn nephew. We got the same, we got the same birthday.
And, and so this is where I wanna talk to you because I would, I would think that you might now, now call her your niece. And so that's what I wanna have. So I think some of that sensitivity training is helpful in this case.
Yeah.
But, but I'd love to have some conversation with you about that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green, for bringing, uh, I call him Dayday, I always call him Dayday. But that's my brothers. You hear me?
And I think I can help with that because um Lisa, what became the very public conversation about Sage? When Sage was still here, there was a different conversation going on amongst that, that um decision that people are saying was final by the date um that Sage disappeared. You talked to Sage's family and that wasn't the case. So that's probably why y'all are having two different using genders.
why y'all are having two different using genders differences. Because that experience was different based on the time that it happened. And I think I've had to kind of say that a couple of times because it's not in, in terms of like they are being disrespectful or dismissive of the place that Sage was in our life at that point. It's just that the public went a place where the family hadn't been with Sage yet. And so I just want to.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, let me tell you my firsthand experience with that so that, so you understand where I come from. Is that just some, uh, community conversations with the LGBTQ community? And, and Sage. And, and, and the pronouns Sage was using with the LGBTQ community. And specifically, you know, firsthand knowledge from that conversation. So that, that, that is why I use the, the pronouns.
I'm not saying, I, I know where you, where you're coming from. Too. I'm just also wanting to say, you know, one of the managers is Sage's dad. And so that, so that conversation can be a very open and public conversation. But I just have had community members in the past think that the family was not there because this is something like that Sage has said clearly to everyone, this is the, my life. Right? And so that's, I just wanted to, you to know that in some, with some family members, that hadn't happened.
Right. Right. And that's my, that is my exact point to this conversation. I mean, uh, just because as, as we work through this and I hear what you're saying, uh, uh, Mr. Gilmore, and, and it's, and like I said, what I'm hearing is wonderful, but I do think that particular component of this conversation is so important. Uh, because community members, you know, I, I didn't know Sage personally. It was just a one-time meeting.
Yeah.
Through, through an event. Um, but through that meeting and, and through that information, but uh, this is part of my dialogue with you that I want to have is, is that is such an important component of this conversation. And even with a, a community member, I had, I had a conversation at, at West Haven about a, a young son. And being bullied. And so I think that these are part of those conversations too, that can, can end up in some violence that I think is an important part of the dialogue that you're, you're having.
Yeah. I agree with you, Ms. Green. Because my, my nephew, I call him Dayday. I got all my nephews and nieces, I give them nicknames when they born. And Dayday, as you call, everyone called him Sage. I call him Dayday. His name, you know, Dayday. And, uh, one of the things that I was afflicted with, especially when I was in the street, that he was assaulted all the time. And I, and I had, I had to, I used to, he's my first nephew, first niece. You know, and I had to defend him a lot, defend her, excuse me. I just see Dayday, I just keep seeing Dayday. And I, and I, I went through a lot because of that. But I was the biggest ally, you know, I was the biggest ally. It hurts me to talk about it now. You know, that's my younger brother's son, and daughter. You know, and it just hurts me, man. It hurts me that, you know, it just hurts, man.
I, I'm sorry to bring that up, but I, like I said, I think it's such an important part of this conversation.
It is. It is. And I agree. I agree.
And, and like I said, I'd love to talk to you offline.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, um, that, um, but I'm muted. Am I muted? Say I'm muted.
You, you are muted.
Not only that, but, um, you know, there are also some, um, international rescue families that there are violence against also in our neighborhood.
Yeah.
Not being highlighted. I know about it because I have a way of communicating with folks.
Yeah.
To me through the phone. Um, and, um, they have a little bit of supportive system. But we also can't leave them out of the conversation.
Yeah, no words left out. I don't think, we did it. We had a, we had a, I went to a house, I got a call on Sixth Street and I go, I said, myself and Brian Page were down on Sixth Street. And it was, uh, I mean, excuse me, I'm sorry, West Haven. It was an individual who was from Syria. We couldn't communicate. But someone had called me because they were being, they, they were, they were being picked on. And it looked like it was about to go to violence, but I had no way to communicate with them. And I was trying to communicate with them. But like I said, this has no color. This has no color barrier. This has no nationality barrier. The key is to stop violence, period. You know? And, uh, so.
Something we have to really truly figure out. Because a language barrier is, is, is a big problem, you know. Yeah, it is. But again, um, you know, the, how I talk to the Burmese families, all three of them, is through my phone. They, they, they will, whatever they type to me comes in English. And whatever I type to them comes in, um, their language. That's how we communicate. But I do know that there is a lot of violence that, that is, um, that happens to them a lot. From, from the kids and some of the grownups who hang around where they were living. But anyway, I just want to make sure that we put that in it. And on South First Street also, you know, there were kids who were messing.
You're muted, Joy. Muted.
And on First, and on South First Street, I'm gonna move that cursor. And on South First Street, there was almost the same issue. I don't know what nationalities they are. But, um, I think we have to make sure we fold that also into the discussion.
Yeah. Yes, I agree.
I just want to say one thing with regard to that, and that is a problem with Mission Creek. I think you have a well-defined approach and goal. When you start trying to get too big or to solve too many, go in too many different areas, you can lose focus of what it is you're trying to do. And the thing I want to say is that
Absolutely.
can raise strong black men. I think that there's some breakdown in regard to some African American men and how they respect women, African American women. But overall, I think African American women have done an excellent job raising their kids. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
You were saying that, you know, a woman couldn't raise a strong black man.
No, I didn't say that. No, no, I didn't say that, ma'am. I never said that. I want, I want to rectify that. I never said that. My, 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 this, this is, this is my, this is my personal beliefs. Is that she can't teach a boy how to be a man. She can raise a strong black man, but there are things that only another, another man could teach a man. And I, I can only tell you that from, from experience, you know, in my own life. Uh, she could be nurturing and cultivating and she could, she could raise a strong black man. But that's the exception, not the rule. You know? What I'm saying is there are certain things that only a man could teach a boy, you know, to, to do and how to react and how to treat. So I wasn't saying that at all because I know a lot of, a strong black woman who raised some very strong black men. You know, but that's the exception, that, that's the exception, not the rule where I come from. And I think Joy can confirm that. And Nakia. I wasn't saying that. I wasn't saying that.
So I think what, so we can, um, maybe move on if there are no other questions. But I think what but I hope that we all, um, understand that is, um, happening is just that the understanding that there's a lot of, um, healing that needs to take place within the black community, within that, you know, the lower income community and that what people are saying is that whatever is needed, you know, they, they will figure, figure out. And there are a lot of, you know, um, points that, um, you know, people are, um, you know, bringing up and will bring up. And you're, um, I think to maybe some of what Lisa is thinking about is just the level of maybe expertise in some of the areas. You know, that maybe needed. Um, I'm thinking oftentimes of how much easier it is to get, like even the Home to Hope team trained and as like peer support. Versus it takes a little bit more to be recognized as like a substance abuse clinician or whatever. But having worked in the substance, um, you know, the field as an outpatient substance abuse counselor here, there's a lot that even with all that formalized training that we could not do within the community. And so I think it's just going to have to be some open-mindedness and flexibility around, you know, around all of that. But, um, you know, the, um, all the points that have been brought up and Lisa, your, um, concerns, I understand and they are, um, very valid. I just wanted to make sure that, um, uh, because I've had this conversation about, um, you know, Sage before, and I think the place where we are, um, today, that a lot of Sage's family had not had the opportunity to have that experience in, by 2012. Um, that a lot of people have had in this, um, discussions today and that the care and love and concern. And, and I think if Dean was ever on a call or if you meet with Dean and Patel, he will tell you about the growth that he, um, he went through about Sage, you know, and so, um, and will be honest with you about that part. So I hear what you're saying and I think if you, when you have those conversations, you'll hear that too, but also at the same time that there were some conversations that just hadn't happened by 2012. And for a lot of reasons, and all those reasons will when you have.
I, I just want to say, you know, I just want to say thanks because, um, it's needed, um, the same way Home to Hope was needed on reentry. And I just, you know, uh, um, when things come to fruition, I always have to share with you all that these are the things that Holly was fighting for before she even came off of council. It was exactly what he, um, Patel is doing now because she had a conference, a reentry conference where she brought in a speaker who, um, was, I can't even remember his name right now. My mind is a little foggy. But she brought him in to, um, to talk. And he was saying the same exact things that Patel is talking about right now, or Mr. Gilmore is talking about right now. But, um, he ended up committing suicide. Only because it was a thing for him of, he was still, even though he was successful, he was still struggling. And, um, so you know, like the Home to Hope program, I would say to Nakia, this is exactly what Holly was talking about. And I'm saying the same thing to you. This is exactly what she was um, was talking about. And then the last thing I will say is, is that part of what, you know, because, yeah, I, I, my kids had their dads in their life, but they still made choices. Right? Um, I was still a single parent, but they still had their dad in their life. But the love, the, the love in the streets sometime is much stronger than the love that you have at home for your children because they want to fit in. But on the women's side of it, the women's side of it, what I learned from working in the West Haven Nursing Clinic, and that's why Holly motto was meeting people where they are. Is because a lot of times what's going on, you gotta take the lens off to see what the root cause is. And the first thing we always see, I see it, I have to apply to me, is that we, we don't love ourselves first. We love others. And that's one of the things that's missing where we are not educating our women and men to love themselves first before they start loving other things or other people. So I just want to say thanks, Patel. Whatever we can do to be a part of what you all are trying to do, because I ain't going out there two o'clock in the morning. I ain't doing it. So I, I just want to say that.
Is the floor still? Any more, any more questions or comments?
I, I just thank you so much for letting us know more about what you're doing and how you're organizing and, and please, whatever we can do to help. And it really struck me when you said, you know, you come in and say, I love you with the, with school being online. I gotta tell you, these Charlottesville city school teachers are amazing. And my son, my fourth grader, every single morning she gets on there and she says hello to every single student and says, I love you. And they, you know, talk about what's going on. And that's just been really cool to see because I, you know, usually we're not in the classroom. So, so anyway, I'm, I'm, uh, that really struck a chord with me because it, I've watched her interact with people and I've been pretty amazed. So thank you.
Thank you.
I see there's an attendee, I think it, oh, she's flashing her hand up.
Yeah, Ms. Katrina Cruz her hand up.
Can we let her speak? Because we're going to move to public comment next anyway. And I think she's been waiting to talk.
Sure. Public comment?
Yeah. So let's move to public comment.
And then we get this Cooper.
If anybody would like to address the commission at this time, please click your raise hand icon. You have three minutes. And we do have Katrina Cooper up and Ms. Cooper, you're on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Um, hi, Ms. Gilmore. I really like Mr. Gilmore. I really liked what you had to offer tonight. And I just have one question because you said something about, um, you gather over First Street on Thursdays, but I didn't catch the time.
Yes, uh, is it Pastor Edwards Church? Uh, every Thursday at six P M. Uh, if you want food, we, we serve food at five thirty. But the actual meeting starts at six P M.
Okay. And then I want to also say though, I feel where you're coming from. It is hard. All depends on where you're raised and the environment and the, the mindset that your child is in. Because I do have a son. And I want to give thanks to you and I will be reaching out to you. Thank you.
You, and thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for, for your thoughts.
Thank you. If anybody else has, uh, would like to address the council, or I'm sorry, the commission at this time, please raise your hand. Next up, we have Brandon Collins. Brandon, you're on with the commission.
Good evening again, CRHA. I'm Brandon Collins from FAR, Public Housing Association Residence. FAR is the resident council and resident advisory board for public housing in Charlottesville. I forgot to give our phone number earlier. It's four, three, four, nine, eight, four, three, two, five, five. Uh, and you can find us online, www.farcville.org. I just wanted to say, uh, thanks to Mr. Gilmore and his organization and his dedication, uh, and, uh, really looking forward to doing what we can to support the effort. I think, uh, the love of the community was, was stressed over and over, and that is, is key to, uh, to success for sure. And, uh, also appreciate the city of Charlottesville uh, providing some funding for that effort. I know CRHA doesn't necessarily have a whole lot of funding, but it sounds like, uh, since this is going to be and already has shown to be a benefit to the community, um, perhaps there's ways to partner with CRHA on funding for this effort. And, you know, I would encourage that, uh, as well as, uh, offering every opportunity uh, to Mr. Gilmore and his organization, um, to participate in the resident services committee uh, and safety committee, obviously, um, could be very important. Uh, as well as connecting with the section three program, which was discussed. And I very much appreciate um, all allowing him this space and, uh, please continue, uh, to allow them to do the work without, um, stipulations. And without a whole lot of demands on them. I wanted to just quickly talk about redevelopment committee. Um, I don't think there's any real official FAR designated spot. I think originally we were all just seated as just regular people. Though I think there is kind of a need to do that. And the, and the MOUs also relate to this. So you've got CRHA having a subcommittee, but it's also referenced in the MOU as a decision-making piece, um, for certain decisions. Um, the main piece of all that is there's gotta be a quorum when decisions are made, particularly like if more RFPs go out, um, those types of things. So it's super, super important that a quorum is attained at those redevelopment committee meetings. Um, and we, uh, look forward to having everybody's participation in that. And, uh, glad you addressed that tonight. I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Next up, we have ED. ED, you're on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Hi, it's Emily Drayfus. I was taking a shortcut when I registered. Um, I'm a community organizer with Legal Aid Justice Center and I'll follow Brandon's lead and, uh, give my organization's phone number. It's 434-977-0553. And I just basically want to say thank you so much. I was really, really impressed by the information Mr. Gilmore relayed. And I am so grateful for you and the guys that you're working with and for the mayor's leadership on this. Um, it sounds like exactly what we needed in the community. And it's, um, just such an important service that you all are providing. And I love that it's homegrown and you all are figuring out how to make it work for the community that you grew up in and the people that you know. So thank you and thank you to the mayor for your leadership to get this in place.
If anybody else would like to address commission at this time, please click the raise hand icon. I see no other hands, Chair.
Excuse me. I don't know how to raise my hand. Do I do this? What I want to do is I want to give my hotline number out, uh, to everyone, to the community and to, uh, to everyone here, which is also my personal number that I dispatch out. The calls come to me and I dispatch them out. And this is the hotline number. It's 434-284-6768. The number is 434-284-6768. Thank you for whoever picked that up there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, any other comments before we adjourn for this evening? I know it's, it's, um, it's been a couple hours. So, um, I know we're all passionate and would love to talk about this more. But, um, to try to, to bring this, um, to a close this evening. Okay. I mean.
Thank you all. This is wonderful. Listen, sorry, my.
Oh, thank you. It's okay. My dog is, my dog is afraid of Zoom. He actually looks just like yours. And so he's like huddled at my feet.
He's a new puppy and he's like a scarf. He hangs on the back of the couch and wraps around my neck. So.
Everyone needs some of that.
Thank you all so very much. Uh, this was a wonderful conversation. I'm so excited to hear what, what Mr. Gilmore is doing and, uh, I look forward to seeing you guys again. And so that with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Um, either Leslie, I don't know if you can hear me.
I'll take this one.
Okay.
Commissioner Doc Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Here, Rucker.
Yes. Um, meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. Your sales, I hope you get some rest.
You're welcome.